Welcome to the Lee County Board of Education meeting. I am now calling it officially to order.
Madam Chair, I move that the Lee County Board of Education go into closed session under North Carolina General Statute 143-318, Point 11A, 1, A3, and A6 to discuss confidential student information under North Carolina General Statute 115C-402, to discuss confidential personnel information under North Carolina General Statute 115C-319 and 115C-321, and to consult with the Board's Attorney and maintain the attorney-client privilege.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Good afternoon and welcome to the Lee County Board of Education. I'm officially calling it to order. The first order of business is a moment of silence, please. Don't mind if you will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have the Lee County Schools Vision Statement and our Code of Ethics.
Lee County Schools, in partnership with the community, will provide challenging learning experiences for students in a safe and supportive environment. We are committed to academic excellence, technological innovations, social responsibility, and lifelong learning. Our success will be demonstrated by the achievement of our students and their positive participation in society.
Code of Ethics for School Board Members, Policy 2120. The Board recognizes that collectively and individually, all members of the Board must adhere to an accepted Code of Ethics in order to improve public education. Members of the Lee County Board of Education should: Avoid conflicts of interest and appearance of conflicts of interest as we handle the work of the Board; Avoid the solicitation and/or acceptance of gifts in return for advice or assistance on matters concerning the operation of the business of the Board; Avoid the misuse of public funds; Avoid misrepresentation or falsification of facts; And avoid making confidential information public. The Board accepts the Code of Ethics established by the North Carolina School Board Association.
Next, we have the approval of the agenda. Does anyone have any recommendations?
Madam Chair, I had a request to move Item 11 Budget Amendment from Consent Agenda and place that under New Business.
Do you mind making the motion then? To accept the agenda?
Yes, so motion to approve that amended agenda with the previous change mentioned.
Get a second. Okay. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have the approval of our minutes.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Gaster.
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We do not have public comments tonight, but we got a lot of beautiful public out there. Next, we have on the agenda is, we're gonna stop right now for a second and just let Eric Davison give us an update on the county commissioners. He's our liaison. That means he goes to their meetings and our meetings and puts it all together and kind of gives us a synopsis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My report for this month is, I'm using the Sanford Herald's reporting of this because it's more succinct and directly to the point. And this was published in the Sanford Herald on Thursday, May the 8th, 2025, by Nancy McCleary. And the article goes on and talks about, in an email from Board of Commissioners Chair Kirk Smith to the Herald, I quote the Commissioner, "Chair, we voted to approve the adjusted capital improvement plan to ensure the Board can avoid immediate tax increases during the next fiscal year," which is, of course, beginning January 1st. In effect, the Board of Commissioners eliminated everything on their adjusted plan for Lee County Schools except the new bus garage and maintenance storage building totaling $13,100,000 for fiscal year 2526, the San Lee High School chiller and pump replacement with a cost of $1.615,114 for fiscal 2728, and the San Lee Middle School chiller and pump replacement totaling $1,355,134 for fiscal year 2829. The remaining Lee County Schools CIP items were moved to fiscal year 2930 and beyond with the Southern Lee High School auditorium and classrooms, which was this Board's number-one request, although it was moved to number four on the list by virtue of the Board of Commissioners' decision. And this was Chairman Smith's reasoning for moving Southern Lee High School auditorium and classroom. He, and I'm quoting, "The auditorium at the WB Wicker School is underutilized, and our Board, the Lee County Board of Commissioners, deems it appropriate that Southern Lee High School's music and theater programs can utilize this asset." But as you know, what Chairman Smith and the Lee County Board of Commissioners have forgotten are the six classrooms that are included in the auditorium build. And also, as a reminder to this Board, Southern Lee High School's capacity of 1,400 or functional capacity of 1,330 is close to being filled now. And for your information, the Board of Commissioners' next budget work session, in which they will be talking about our other part of our budget, including salaries, this work session will be held on May 30th. That is not confirmed yet on their website, though it was the date that was mentioned at their last meeting, and they had not set a time or a location. I will keep the Board apprised as to where and what time that meeting will be taking place. But those are the highlights from this last month's meetings from the Board of Commissioners as it relates to this Board's. Thank you for the time, Madam Chair.
Pass. We appreciate that. Now, we are at the Chairman's Report. As you know, I also serve on the North Carolina School Board Association Legislative Committee. And as of now, there's at least 37 bills plus that has already left the Senate, that has gone to the House to be voted on. Some of them, I wouldn't say it was contentious, but it was, the school board members and the staff on the North Carolina School Board Association on the Legislative Committee, they had, it was wrought with some concerns. There's many mandates that's been put out there, that's being put on our schools again, and not just the mandates, but they're unfunded mandates. So when, by that, to keep it as simple as I possibly can, what that means is, if you see this sheet right here, and I know I show this a whole lot, this sheet here talks about all the mandates that we have to do already. And so when they add more and more mandates, we, by law, and they put it into the law, it's the consensus of the School Board Association and, quite frankly, this Board, that with a mandate, they should fund those mandates. And that's where they stand on that part. The bills that may or may not go forward, we will have an update on those at our next Board meeting. The one I think most people are most concerned about is the calendar flexibility. There were two bills. One bill basically is good. It's like, state of our business, let the locals make their own decision. The other one is not a good bill. That bill came out by a Senator that brought it forward, and it is mislabeled by saying it's adding calendar flexibility. It's not. It adds more restrictions. It adds costs. It encourages people to sue the school board. And it also has, you must have equal semesters. And there's some things in there that makes it absolutely impossible for us as a school system to do what's best for our children. Now, I'd also like to just add this. That first bill is, in case you want to look it up, the one that is being sent forward that everyone was disagreement with was Senate Bill 754. The next one was House Bill 121, and that's called the School Cal Flex Statewide Open Calendar. That one is the one, quite frankly, it's written well, but the reality is, it probably will not pass. And the bill eliminates any reference to mandate start and end dates. That's what that, the one that I like, or we all agree on, eliminates any reference to mandate start and end dates. It allows the local Board of Education to set the school calendars, what is best for the students, family, and community. But everybody knows that, it's no secret that the travel and the tourist industry leaders have vehemently opposed providing local elected officials with more authority over the school district calendar. Opponents would argue that schools starting earlier would devastate North Carolina's tourist industry. I sat up in those meetings, and I listened to those meetings in Raleigh, and quite frankly, I was appalled, because it doesn't matter. I don't care what party you are. This Board is about the children in Lee County. But ironically, Governor Josh Stein just announced this week that North Carolina's economy set a new record in 2024. And I heard the members who were wanting to promote this bill, and they basically said, and you can watch the meetings online, but they basically said, "We had all this tourism coming into North Carolina, and people are coming from all out of North Carolina. They're setting records to come to North Carolina. But the reason they want to keep the bill is because our children are working at these tourist organizations." Now, I don't know what you heard, but what I heard was, hey, our kids' education comes second to you making money, and our kids need to be working in all these tourist organizations, but other children from out of the state of North Carolina come here for a vacation. That's what I heard sitting in the meeting. And then we go forward with it. Once again, North Carolina ranked number five nationwide in domestic visitation, and they were only behind California, Florida, Texas, and New York. They have had all kinds of international travel. We are, we as a Board and as a community, I'm certain we've already voted on this. We've already had a survey on it. 79.9%, I think, Dr. Dawson-Buck, has agreed that we should do what's best for our children. So, but I don't expect that one law, the one that we think is HB 121, that gives full flexibility. We don't, we don't really expect that to go through, because that's just the nature of the beast. But I would like for us to stand together as a community and realize that this Board is doing the best that we can, and we will be approving this calendar, and we will continue to do this until the laws are actually changed, if they change at all. My next announcement has to do with the graduation ceremonies. The Bragg Street Graduation is on the 16th, it's Friday, this coming Friday, at 10:00 a.m. at Bragg Street Academy. I think everybody should go to that. It's a great graduation. On Thursday, on May the 22nd, at 7:00 p.m. is Lee Early College Graduation, and that's at the Dennis Wicker Civic Center. Thursday, on May the 29th, at 7:30, we have Lee County High School Graduation at the Paul Gay Stadium at Lee County High School. And Friday, at 7:30, we have Southern Lee High School Graduation at the Cletus Gorm Stadium at Southern Lee High School. Next, we have the Superintendent Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We would like to recognize some students and some schools tonight for some hard work. And first, I would like to invite Ms. Leslie Kottrell to please come forward as we recognize some recent Battle of the Books winners at several schools. And I think Mr. Dylan Crockett is going to join her as well.
Thanks so much for letting me speak to you this evening about our Battle of the Books competitions here in Lee County. Battle of the Books is an extracurricular activity that's open to any student who loves to read. It started district-wide in our elementary schools in 2016, and it's become a valued tradition that tradition that continues to inspire the love of reading and the value of teamwork in our students. For the last two years, we've been able to take our winning fifth-grade team to the regional competitions in Zebulon, North Carolina, and it has been very interesting to battle other winning schools across the state. This year, we launched a Battle of the Books Junior, where we were able to have third-grade students read a number of the books. They were able to come to a day of competition. We're hoping to inspire them to want to join the team next year. We had 132 students, elementary students, participate this year. They read 16 books, and at the end of two days, answered 432 questions. So it was a busy couple of days. Teachers and administrators and students were already gearing up for next year's competition. We're delivering books. Some schools are building a summer loan program where kids can come in and get the Battle of the Books books from the front office during the summer. Other principals are planning a read aloud grade level-wide based on the Battle of the Books, so they can build a reading community in their schools. But tonight, we're here to recognize our champions from this year. And I would like to start with our fourth-grade champs, and I'd like to introduce their coach, Ms. Deborah Gro, oh, no, fourth grade is actually from BT Bullock. So we have Cindy Mabry and Amy Bauer, the board of their coaches this year.
After you introduce your kids, have them move here and stand.
Our students this year, we had six of them, but only four of them could attend tonight. We have Kilian Benson. You can head over there. Lauren Brown. Mia Alaman. And Lincoln Dietrich. We also have Jake Rodriguez and Presley McCoy, who could not attend tonight.
When we first met our fourth-grade Battle of the Books team, I have to tell you, we were a little concerned about their competitiveness, because they are the kindest, most soft-spoken, calm, reserved group of children you ever want to meet. And then something wild happened. We train our fourth and fifth-grade teams together, and every time we put this fourth-grade team up against a fifth-grade team, they morphed into these ferocious creatures, like lions, tigers, and bears, and sometimes velociraptors. Gone were their quiet smiles, and they would put on their game faces, become laser-focused, and they would attack every question with a fierce determination. We couldn't be prouder of their hard work and their efforts and how much they have grown this year. We can't wait to see what they're going to bring to the table next year. Congratulations.
Our winning fifth-grade team this year is from Deep River, and Ms. Deborah Gross is here as the coach.
My partner coach is our media specialist, Joanne Lawler, and she could not be here tonight. We have four of our six-member team here tonight. Come on up, guys. Itzel Salgado. Liam Kai Ampa. Olivia Blakely. And Hudson Lundey. Our group was special to begin with because our team won the fourth-grade competition last year, and four of our six team members were on that team. Three of them are here tonight. Raise your hands. So we had a team that knew what it took to compete. They knew what Mrs. Lawler and I expected. They knew that we were going to require a lot of them in terms of dedication, commitment, perseverance. And we expect every student to read all the books. So in fourth grade, they read all the books, and then this year, they read all the books. And I think that makes a difference. We were a little concerned about Christmas time, that we weren't going to be ready, but they got it together, and they showed us what they're really made of. They showed us their heart, their dedication, their commitment, and their true grit. And so I look forward to seeing what these students will do in the future. Thank you.
So after many years of success with Battle of the Books at our elementary schools, in 2022, we decided to bring that program to our middle schools and high schools. What started off at the middle schools as just one team per school has now grown in size every year, and next year, we're expecting to have three teams per middle school, one for each grade level, like we do at the elementary school with a separate fourth and fifth-grade team for nearly every elementary school. So this year, we had 49 middle schoolers participate. Our winning middle school team was San Lee Middle School for the third year in a row that we've had this competition. This year, they were coached by Mary Della Slate, who is herself a student at Lee Early College, supervised by CG Burnham, who's the academic coach at San Lee Middle School. So if y'all would like to come on up.
Tonight, we have nine of our 13 Battle of the Books members, so I will just call them up. Luke Windmeyer. Joel Villalta. Samuel Montez. Aurora Melpholder. Jamie Crabtree. Hadassa Lopez. Rayanne Hunter. Allison, oh my gosh. Lopez. Alvarez, Allison Alvarez, I'm so sorry, Allison, and Molly Bauer. We had just one eighth grader this year. She's returning from last year, and the rest are seventh and sixth graders, so we are really looking forward to next year. But I'm going to let Mary Della tell you a little bit about our special team.
We are so, so proud of our team. They've worked so hard. They've had a lot of fun, too. Like Ms. Burnham said, we only won an eighth grader, and we're really proud because they beat a whole team of East Lee eighth graders. So, yay. Enjoyed to coach because they're so passionate. Most of them read all of the books. They studied the questions and the titles and authors in their free time, and I'm sure there were a lot of car rides with audiobooks. But we're so, so proud of you. Thank you for working hard, and please come back next year.
And at the high school level, we had 20 students compete this year from our two traditional high schools and Lee Early College. For the third year in a row, Southern Lee High School has won the high school Battle of the Books, and here is their coach, Ms. Josie Guin, and her team.
This is my first year as coach, so I'm not sure exactly how these go. We had three of our five students that were able to make it tonight. So first off, we have Elliot Baumann. And then we have Gina DeSerbo. Finally, we have Alana Clemmer. And then not able to join us tonight were Olivia O'Shaughnessy and Jacqueline Hardon Martinez. Again, I think this is a special group because I have not done Battle of the Books before, and I had no idea what to expect. I know that I love to read because I teach English. However, I did not know how competitive it was. I did not know how nervous I would be at the competition and how much I really wanted them to get the right answers. But I did watch their dedication as they read all of these books, and I watched them really come alive as they discussed these books. I got to discuss books with, you know, students that absolutely love them, which is awesome. And so I really, really, I really think that their dedication was amazing, and now I'm excited, you know, to come back next year and be the coach again.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. You may have a seat. Thanks so much. See you next year.
We are proud to announce tonight that nine additional Lee County Schools have earned the distinguished Purple Star Award for 2425, joining Jaglen Edwards Elementary in demonstrating exemplary support for military-connected students and their families. This brings our district total to 10 of our 17 campuses, recognized by the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction for their commitment to serving military families. This recognition highlights the dedication of our schools in providing meaningful support through transition programs designed or designated staff contacts and professional development focused on unique challenges that our military families face. At this time, I would like to ask Dr. Lisa Duffy, our Executive Director of Student Services, and Dr. Chevelle Godwin, our Liaison Officer from Fort Bragg, to come forward, and they will share more about the significance of the Purple Star Award and present each school with their official banner signifying their Purple Star distinction.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board, and guests. As Dr. Dawson-Bach shared, I am honored to be here this evening to share this great achievement with you all, with our district reaching 10 schools who have received this prestigious honor from the North Carolina's Department of Public Instruction. The honorable designation of the Purple Star Award highlights schools that are intentional in their efforts to educate their staff about military life while being strategic in providing those supports and structures necessary to make sure that those students thrive. Receiving this award is a clear indication that our schools are dedicated to the preparation for, the education about, and the celebration of our military families. To help us celebrate this honor, I would like to introduce Ms. Chevelle Godwin. She serves as our district's Installation Military Liaison, and she is going to share more information with you. And following her remarks, we will call the schools up to receive their school's banner.
Thank you, Dr. Duffy. Good evening to the Board members and to all of you, Dr. Dawson-Bach. It is indeed a pleasure to be here this evening and to talk about the accomplishments of these schools that have done wonderful things this year. These schools have shown North Carolina and Lee County Schools their commitment that they are willing to shine to our military community with this award, the Purple Star Designation, to those schools which demonstrate military-friendly practices and a commitment to military students and families. For the work done, these schools, they deserve the Purple Star Award icon on their North Carolina School Report Card, which they will now receive when parents ask and research about their schools. And I can promise you, our military families, as they come to the fourth-largest state across the nation and our globe, Fort Bragg stands out. And when we, as school liaison officers, talk to our families, they're asking about Lee County Schools. It gives me great pleasure to talk to our families about what's happening here in Lee County. I tell them that Dr. Dawson-Bach has done many things, and that this district is a district of distinction. Each school that will come before you tonight has made every effort to do the following to become a Purple Star school. They did a lot of required activities, plus one optional activity. They submitted artifacts to their principals and schools. They submitted applications. They signed all kinds of lists. They did professional development, and guess what? Some of the purple T-shirts that you see tonight were serving as cheerleaders before their children and families. So there was a POC that actually took on the umbrella to say, "We will purple up" for Lee County Schools. So it gives me great pleasure to call each one of the schools before you that will be called tonight. And Colonel Chad Mixon and our General Commanding General of Fort Bragg says to Lee County Schools tonight, "Thank you for what you've done, and thank you for what you've done for our military families." So let's begin, and let the drum roll begin. Our first school tonight that we're going to call is Bragg Star Academy. Bragg Street Academy. I need my glasses. Our next school, BT Bullock Elementary School. East Lee Middle School. And definitely not least, the one who set the path and started it all, Jaglen Edwards. This is a little stick of dynamite. When I tell you that families contacted us, asking us about this school, they definitely did. So we have to definitely thank this little lady right here for everything she did for Lee County Schools, because families called and asked specifically about Jaglen Edwards. Southern Lee High School. Warren Wims High, Warren Wims School. And WB Wicker Elementary School. Look at all those Purple Star Schools. We thank you for everything that you've done, and guess what? It's only just begun. Thank you so much. Let's give them a hand. Let's give them a hand.
Congratulations again, and thanks for all of the work that you put into the application process and helping to recognize your school as one that is military-friendly. The last thing on my report, as we enter testing season, I do want to take a moment to acknowledge the hard work that has gone into preparing our students for this time of the year. Across the district, our teachers, our staff, and administrators have dedicated themselves to academic excellence, and we are hopeful that the growth that we've cultivated will be reflected in improved outcomes. That being said, it's equally as important to remember this, that our students and our schools are more than a test score. Standardized tests are one way to measure academic progress, but they don't tell the whole story. They don't measure a child's creativity, their compassion, or their determination. They don't capture the joy of a student who's made a breakthrough after months of hard work or the courage of one who shows up every day despite difficult circumstances at home. They don't reflect the relationships our educators build, the safe environments we foster, or the values that we instill in every classroom like empathy, resilience, and grit. At the end of the day, we do want strong academic performance, and we are committed to that continuous improvement. But we must also continue to lift up the whole child and celebrate the many ways our schools are helping students grow. So let's keep this broader vision in mind as we support our students and staff through a stressful time, which is testing. I want to thank everyone for their hard working in making this a great year, and I wish the very best as we finish out. As a reminder, the last day of school for Lee Early College is next Thursday, and those on the traditional and tramway calendars finish up next Friday. Those last days for all schools are early release days, and we hope that everyone has a safe and restful summer. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Dawson-Bach. Next, we have our financial report. Ms. Kelly Jones? Oh, there you go.
And chair members of the Board, you have before you the March financials. Shared it on my end. Just as a synopsis, you have before you the March financials. The current fiscal year budget, we're sitting at $134,473,047.73. The year-to-date expenditures of $87,392,233.01, with encumbrances sitting at $4.94,942,137.85, with the remaining budget of $42,138,676.87, and we're sitting at 68.66% as of the end of March. You also have before you the Board expenditures for, as of the date of the operations meeting. And I'm open to any questions that you may have.
Does the Board have any questions? Not at all? Okay. Thank you. Our Board Attorney has no report. And we go to committee reports. Curriculum and instruction did not meet, but their next meeting is on May the 14th at 3:30 in the Assembly Room on May the 14th. The Discipline Committee did not meet this month as well, and their next meeting is on May the 28th at 4:30 p.m. Next, we will hear from Operations, Alan Rumel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've got a bit of a long report, but I'll try to be brief. So the Operations Committee met on April 29th. We discussed the Warren Williams School consolidation, which is under new business tonight, so we'll save that for that time. We talked about the bus garage update. So there has been an RFQ for an architect that has been posted. Submissions are due by June 5th, and we hope to bring a selection to the August Board meeting. Just so the Board is aware, we do need to have plans drawn in build bids into the county well ahead of the end of the next fiscal year, which would be June of '26. With the CIP being cleared, like Mr. Davidson mentioned, I would just say that funding may not be guaranteed if it is not used in this fiscal year as designated. So we want to be prudent about that. We discussed lottery distribution, ADM fund. So this is a new lottery money account that we found that was not previously known to us. So this is just additional lottery fund based on ADM of the district. It does typically require a local match unless it's used for technology purchases, which is the intent for us. So those funds are being shifted to technology to use for device purchases in the amount of $51,301.06 that has been requested for release. That is located on the consent agenda tonight for approval. We discussed lottery closeout forms. So the amount here was $166,522. And this is basically leftover lottery money where funds were allocated, and invoices came in under budget. So this is placing those funds back into the lottery fund where they belong. That is also located on tonight's consent agenda. We discussed Letterland Renaissance Learning and McGraw-Hill contract renewals, and those are all contracts that are over $50,000. So Letterland is basically your science of reading materials. And just wanted to note, Dr. Kelly was able to negotiate a better rate to save us about $30,000 from the original quote. I believe that was on the books and materials portion of that. So the total for that contract is $230,032.85. Renaissance Learning is basically the accelerator reader program for K-5 and star assessment for K-12. Hopefully, I wrote that down right. Yep. The amount for that one is $79,575.28. And then McGraw-Hill is the wonders program for ELA and reading comprehension. That one is $87,005.48. And just wanted to note that all of these programs were reviewed by the Program Review Committee last year and approved for use. And those are all located on the consent agenda tonight as well. We talked about student Chromebook purchases. So this is a district-wide purchase. I think we talked last month about the three times-a-year purchase where the schools kind of consolidate orders. This is a district-wide purchase where we have $100,000 set aside in capital as part of the laptop refresh plan. So every year, we make a bulk purchase to not have to do that all at once. We were able to get a rate that was $6 per device cheaper than that last round of text purchases. So good news there. And the total for this is $99,940.04. And those devices will be distributed to the schools according to ADM. That is also on tonight's consent agenda. We discussed the J.R. Ingram Roof Replacement Bids. So that bid information is available in the packet. The recommended approval is for affordable roofing, not to exceed $420,767. And just to note that we had estimated that at $700,000 in the lottery fund for that project. So it came in well under what we had anticipated. So good news there. That one is also located on tonight's consent agenda for approval. We discussed security camera upgrades for East and West Lee and W.B. Wicker. So this one is swapping some old coax cameras to IP cameras and adding some additional cameras as well. So Vector has a service and licensing contract. So this was just a single bid for this contract. Lottery funds have already been approved for the work, and the amount from Vector Security is $71,793.58, also on the consent agenda for tonight. The last thing I had is the Budget Amendment for Lottery Project reimbursement. That is the one that has been moved to new business. We'll talk about that later. And with that, the next Operations Committee meeting is scheduled for May 27th at 4:00 p.m. in the Heinz Building. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And also, I'm certain that a lot of the Board members have been watching the news in reference to technology going up due to tariffs. And so allegedly, according to the media, it actually discusses the fact that we actually moving ahead. So kudos to whoever decided to go ahead and do this student Chromebook order. That was a good decision that was made well in advance. Next, we have unfinished business, which is none. And on the new business-- No, I'm sorry. Policy Committee. I'm sorry. I flipped my page too soon. All right, Mr. Gaster? Sorry. I wasn't trying to skip you.
So April 22nd, we had our policy meeting. And basically, this is the first reading, just for y'all's review, that went over Student Health Services, Grant Administration, use of unmanned aircraft, and family and medical leave, just for FYI. And our next policy meeting is going to be May the 20th at 5:00 p.m. at the Heinz Education Building in the basement.
Thank you, Mr. Gaster. I'm sorry. Now we're on to action items. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of moving the Budget Amendment to C1, and Warren Williams will be C2, and Lee County Schools Strategic Plan will be C3, and Personnel will be C4. If I could get a motion, please?
It's removed.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, now we're on to new business, and we're back to you again, Alan. You want to discuss the Budget Amendment?
Yes, ma'am. So the request here was just to move this to new business since it is a large dollar amount. So this is lottery project reimbursements received and being appropriated back to the correct account in the amount of, I don't have the exact number, but it's $1.96 million. So just a reminder to the Board, lottery projects are paid upfront out of the capital account and then reimbursed once all the paperwork's completed, the work is completed, all the red tape that goes on at the state. And then, once approved there, we get reimbursement. So this $1.96 million is that money coming back to us for projects that are already done. I also wrote down here that we've had questions in the past about some of the fund balances that we carry and why we haven't spent that money. I think this helps to highlight why we carry fund balances in some of our accounts. So we needed that almost $2 million in working capital to be able to fund these lottery projects upfront. And I am aware that there are other counties where the county actually funds upfront the school system's lottery projects. And there's some benefits to that, which is saving on sales tax. And then, obviously, the school system does not have to float those projects for several months waiting on reimbursement. So I don't, there may be opportunity there. But that is the detail for this Budget Amendment that is in the packet, and I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Any questions in reference? I knew it's a huge amount. That's why we moved it, to give you the opportunity. No questions? Okay. All right. So we need to make a motion?
Yep.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right. Next, we have the Warren Williams relocation. Dr. Dawson-Bach?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm actually going to call Ms. Stacy Eggers, Assistant Superintendent of Operations, to come up and give a brief overview. I just do want to, while she's coming forward, give some background. Been in several meetings in the county, not necessarily school system-related, but we hear often about the lack of childcare and the need for more in the district. We often get asked if we have the ability to expand our pre-K options. So we began researching what availability we may have to expand. Warren Williams is a facility that was built in the 1950s. And when we started looking and having people coming in to see what would the cost be to expand that facility, just to do some minor upgrades would be right at $1 million. We did add a whole brand-new pre-K facility on to the, our request to the county commissioners for a long-range CIP plan. I think that came in right around $4 million to do a whole new facility. But we began having internal discussions about the fact that in 1819, when W.B. Wicker was built/renovated, the bottom floor of the original building was renovated to accommodate pre-K classrooms and meet the standards to accommodate those pre-K classrooms. And so we think that this makes sense to have the discussion about relocating those students into a much better facility that is probably safer, that's probably nicer. And beyond that, you know, I think this is showing a lot of fiscal responsibility. We are better utilizing the facilities that we have while also removing a project off the county CIP, although at this point, everything is off the CIP. But I do think this is, number one, the right thing to do for kids. Number two, long-term planning, I think it's the right thing to do to be physically responsible. So I will turn this over to Ms. Eggers.
Good evening. So as Dr. Dawson-Bach just conveyed, we just wanted to present kind of all the options. I know several of you have had the opportunity to walk through both sites and kind of see it in a more hands-on setting. And so we're really excited about this opportunity for the kids who kind of, it's their first impression of Lee County schools. So there were three primary drivers, as he already alluded to. First, that upgraded facility. The classrooms in the lower building at Warren Williams presently have communal bathrooms only. They don't have restrooms in the classroom, which, if you can imagine trying to take that many tiny humans at once to the restroom, it is a struggle. And then, the cost savings in and of itself, which I'll go into further, but also the better utilization of those existing facilities in a more updated space. So he mentioned that Warren Williams opened in 1950. There are presently eight classrooms for students, and we are housing 144 pre-K kids at that site right now. Those are all NC pre-K students at that site. And so we do collaborate with the Partnership for Children in that. We only can house 144 at Warren Williams because of some of those restrictions due to the specifications and the codes and things like that. Wicker reopened in 2019. The basement, as he mentioned, was designed with pre-K in mind as well as a pre-K playground facility. And then, there is the potential to have up to 10 pre-K classrooms. And what we're kind of waiting on now is the state NC pre-K office to kind of give us the stamp of approval in terms of the number of students per classroom that we could have. When we had the two pre-K classrooms there before, we had 18 in each. So just wanted to walk you through some photos of the facilities. Certainly, the exterior facade is just nicer and newer. We're really proud of W.B. Wicker and how that historic has melded with the modern. Just to look inside the classrooms there. Presently, the sinks that are in the classrooms for the students to wash their hands, which they are required to wash their hands before and after breakfast and lunch. In the pre-K setting, and when they arrive, the sinks are kind of in the middle of the classroom space. And so this provides just a better flow of classroom, if you will. The left shows the present storage at Warren Williams within the classroom. And then, the right shows the cubbies. And then also, just the updated cabinetry that comes with a newer build. The hallways, the ceilings are a lot higher at W.B. Wicker. If you were able to walk through, you know that it doesn't feel quite as tight in there. So that's also just helpful as our kids transition to an elementary school the next year. Just learning to walk down the hallway and to be around other kids is a huge opportunity for them as well. I mentioned the communal bathrooms earlier, but each classroom, as you can see, is equipped with kind of an en suite, if you will. And so that allows, they are all their size. And so that's helpful for them as they, again, move and transition into elementary school. Any questions about anything I've said thus far?
I just wanted to maybe clarify, since we're using the word basement. I mean, the picture showed it, but if anybody is confused about that, it's not like an underground basement like you have at the house.
Correct.
It's all above.
Right. I should say ground floor.
Like a walkout basement.
There we go. Thank you, Ms. Ortiz. Yes. So with the maintenance and upkeep, you know, as an older facility continues to age, certainly, we spend more in labor cost and parts to update that facility. This is a, I would say, a safe estimate in terms of water and electrical per month savings. I had Chris McNeil and his team look at, you know, what are our costs over the summer when there aren't children there, which is what we are moving towards proposing, moving the students out of Warren Williams into W.B. Wicker. So it'd be around a $400 to $500 per month savings. There, there's personnel cost predominantly with the nursing assignments. So it will actually shift the nurses around and allow us to have virtually every elementary-- and allow us to have virtually every elementary school with a full-time dedicated nurse, which is very, very important. And we've seen, we've kind of begun to rely on that post-COVID. Also, Warren Williams, Bragg Street, and LEC would receive more nursing presence or supervision. Additionally, the dedicated custodian that is at Warren Williams presently would come to WB Wicker, whereas, right now, that custodial team at WB Wicker is charged with cleaning the walkout basement. And so, it does make it difficult because it is a large school. It was built for 969 students. And so, that's a lot. A lot of ground to cover. The food will not have to be transported from BT Bullock. And so, when I talked to Ms. Kegel, we talked about mileage for the fuel truck to, mileage and fuel to carry the meals back and forth, but also, the trays. They cost seven cent more for those little takeout trays. And so, we want to be conscious of that as well. Additionally, because we are CEP and all of our meals are no cost to student, we are having to just send meals over and not necessarily getting a full gauge on who's actually taking a meal. So, there is likely some food waste in there that we can recoup. And then, as I mentioned before, the in-class restrooms. As an elementary person and mom of littles, that is a huge game changer. So, I mentioned earlier that WB Wicker was built for 969 students. However, the functional capacity, we've talked a lot about that as we've looked ahead, is truly 921. So, right now, we're presently using 61% with Wicker's current enrollment. But if we added the 144 students, that would put us up to a 79% square footage utilization rate, which is pretty good. We'd be very, very happy with that. And presently, three of the 12 teaching and learning spaces at Warren Williams are unable to be used due to, they don't meet the requirements for the restrooms or they're not how the doors are accessible both ways. So, this would also benefit us in utilizing those facilities. So, we've already talked to the Partnership for Children and NC pre-K. We're just waiting on kind of that, that final stamp of approval from NC pre-K, as I mentioned before. We would have a separate entrance to keep the pre-K separate from the Wicker students. So, likely, some logistical rearranging. But we think that, in the end, that this would be beneficial for those families as they come to visit campus. The busing would remain totally separate. So, we won't have elementary kids on the same buses as pre-K students. Additionally, this would give the opportunity for those Warren Williams kiddos to transition into the gym and the cafeteria. So, they're in a school setting and they're going to, you know, hopefully, see some positive role models and be integrated more into that facility. And then, there's already a playground at Wicker that is pre-K rated, which would allow us to continue to hold over half of the capacity or half of the enrollment at Warren Williams, which is what is required of a five-star center. So, you may be saying, "Great, but what next?" Right? So, we just kind of wanted to put forth and share for you first some considerations. We've talked about already tonight that there are limited funding options. We did put the $4.3 mil, or $4.5 million request to renovate Warren Williams on the CIP this year. And we know that, right now, that's not, not on the table anymore. And so, with the age of the facility, it's highly likely that that number continues to grow. So, I think, in order for us to best utilize our facilities for our students and to make it a great place to teach and learn, we have some opportunities that, that are presented for us. So, it could become storage for various departments. You know, with the loss of Jonesboro as a storage facility for us, we need place to, to store materials, curriculum materials, but also, maintenance has some storage needs. We've also talked about it becoming a parent resource center. So, we have a mental health team, the school mental health team, where their offices could be run out of that setting. And it would allow for, also, parents to access that setting in a more easier fashion. We also have the Family Engagement Center that is presently housed at WB Wicker. And that is where a team works with our migrant population to help get resources to families and students. And then, we have the potential to do all that and still sell a portion of the land. We don't have to make that decision today, but I wanted to ensure that you understood the size of the lot that Wicker, I mean, that Warren Williams presently sits on. So, it is 12.5 acres and that tax value there of $2.3 million is listed. You can see at the top, that main lot is 8.4 acres. And so, we have the potential to, to sell that surrounding, that surrounding land. Questions on that? So, then, the next step, we'd want to meet with the staff at Warren Williams. They were already privy to this information, but just kind of wanted to avail us, avail ourselves to make sure that you had questions, we could answer them. But we also want to make sure that they're comfortable with this. And speaking with Ms. Huffer, she feels very confident that her staff is, is going to see it as a blessing. There's always some challenges with change, right? But I think, ultimately, for the kids, it will be the best. The final walkthrough with NC pre-K, we're hoping around mid-June. And the first day that all kids would be present at Warren Williams pre-K would be August 27. So, we do have that luxury of a little bit more flexibility with time. And so, we would begin packing everything up and moving it all for them. Hopefully, our aim is for the start in August.
Now, you had the CIP. Did we not have renovations, a cost amount, if we were going to do anything? We have anything anticipated waiting to be done at Warren Williams that we would not have to do if we did this move?
Yes. So, the full renovation amount was $4.5 million, but we, we were already looking at security gates. We have a gate around the facility, but the gate to actually get in was totaling around $700,000. That was, it came in pretty immediate. We would want to certainly look at the lighting updates and things like that. We knew we were doing the facility's condition assessment, which we should have those results in August. But one of the things that that assessment would do would chart out for us what are the cost of renovations versus what is the value of the building. So, we'll have that in our arsenal as well.
So, as a synopsis, if, if we go this direction, then you would say the $4.5 million? Am I wrong in that? And the renovations and the $700,000 for the gates?
Yes. There was, if we continue to use Warren Williams as it presently exists, all of that has to happen for it to be maintained for kids. Certainly, if we want to look at modifying its use for, for adults only, I think that takes that renovation budget way down. But I'm not the expert in that.
And has anyone discussed if the commissioners may need that property for something? Have we went down that lane yet? Okay.
We, we have not gone down that lane. I wanted board approval that we could even head this route before we even have that conversation. And we need to work on getting those kids moved, should the board be okay with that. And then, we can come back and certainly have those discussions.
Now, before we move forward, it would be nice if some of the board members who went out there and watched, if you could tell us what your impression was. Because I know you described it as a basement. The first thing I saw was lighting. It was daylight. Kids love daylight. And then, the safety, Mr. McNeil and also, Dr. Dawson-Buck agreed to put a wall there and then, a glass. I wasn't joking about bulletproof just here, on that one side area. And to me, it was a very good experience. And I think it's something that's worthy of doing. So, is there any other board members? Alan, you were there.
Yeah, no, I agree. And I think, I think honestly, the pictures don't quite do it justice. I know, like, the maintenance team and, and the staff at Warren Williams have done a good job making that a nice space for kids. But the pictures don't capture, like, the old construction. There's, you know, conduit running electricity where it needs to be. And, you know, Ms. Eggers mentioned the sinks kind of in the middle of the classrooms in a weird spot. A lot of those things that are hard to capture on pictures.
Yeah, the functionality.
Yeah, Wicker is definitely a much upgraded space. I definitely agree.
Has any other board members been to both schools?
Yes. We went yesterday and it just is totally night and day, you know, in comparison. You go to Warren Williams and it's a little sad. And, you know, the parents, you want them to be excited when they're bringing their babies, you know, to their first experience at school. And then, when you walk into WB Wicker, it is like a breath of fresh air. It's just open, you know, it's very nice. Like you said, it's not a basement. It's, you know, you feel like you are on the main level. So, very reassuring. I think we talked about, I think it would get kids excited that they may want to continue their elementary education at WB Wicker after attending the pre-K because they're there, they're familiar with the school. And just, I think they would be really excited about it.
Eric, did you have anything?
Yeah, I just wish we'd done this earlier.
I absolutely love it. I'm just going to tell you, I love those classrooms. I fit in every chair. I can reach every sink. I was like, "Yes." It's amazing. It's just, I think it's very beautiful over there at WB Wicker as well. Okay. No more questions and I can entertain a motion?
I move that the Lee County Board of Education approve relocating the Warren Williams pre-K to the campus of WB Wicker Elementary Schools beginning 2025-2026 school year.
Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have our Lee County School Strategic Plan. I believe that's Ms. Clark. She's all excited.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm going to change our PowerPoint here briefly. The good news is that I have had the pleasure of coming before you, before, to talk about our strategic plan. And there really has not been any changes to where we stand with our strategic plan, the goals, the strategies, and the metrics that we have have remained the same. Our committee has continued to meet to talk about the, what that would look like as far as the visual presentation. But the, the meat of the plan has remained the same. And so, I come to you this evening just to kind of represent that plan to you and to seek approval. I do want to just summarize briefly. The work of, of the committee was that we did revisit our vision, mission, and values in this process. That was a vital part of making sure that this plan remained aligned to who we are in 2025. We also whittled down, using a lot of different perceptual and quantitative data, four focus priorities, seven goals, and 39 strategies. So, a review of what the strategic plan touches on. The first focus priority is student growth achievement and future focus pathways. Our goals are that by 2030, that we will achieve a 10% increase in overall student achievement based on our performance composite and growth. And you will note that that does include kindergarten through 12th grade. So, every single student within our system is being accounted for. By 2030, we would like 100% of our Lee County student groups, subgroups, to meet or exceed growth. And that measure will be measured by EVAAS, which measures growth in all of our subgroups. You can see below that, we have broken out the different goals, the different ways that we will measure that goal. And these are the baselines as they exist right now. Our second focus goal is comprehensive student well-being, safety, and resilience. Our first goal is that by 2030, Lee County Schools will increase the percentage of parents and caregivers reporting that school services are favorable and safe. And the second goal being that by 2030, Lee County Schools will increase the student daily attendance rate to 95%. You will note that for the first goal that we have identified here, we don't have a baseline yet. And we feel that we need to reach out to our community and conduct a survey in order to have the right information to present here with the baseline. We anticipate that would happen in August 2025. But for the attendance goal, of course, we have that. And we're currently at 93% system-wide. And we would like to move that forward to 95% to be more alignment with the state. Our focus goal number three is in regards to operational efficiency and long-term sustainability. There is one pretty big goal that we have here. By 20, by 2030, Lee County Schools will maintain its facilities to support 95% optimal usage, ensuring efficient resource management and long-term sustainability. You will note that there are two metrics that we use here. And both of these will be part of our comprehensive facilities audit, which is starting now. And we're hoping to have some elements of that in July. But to make sure that we have the elements for our baseline in August 2025. Those two goals will have preventative maintenance. We'll look at preventive maintenance and estimated cost versus building value as the metrics for that goal. Our focus goal number four is to strengthen human capital pipeline and to retain quality educators. The two goals underneath that focus area are that by 2030, we will have a 10% increase on the retention component of the biannual teacher working conditions survey. And the second goal being that Lee County Schools will increase teacher retention to 86% and remain below the state average through establishing human capital pathways and improving staff engagement. The two metrics you see listed below are the teacher working conditions survey, which is conducted by the state. We decided, as a strategic planning committee, that we also would do a, a survey that mimics the state version in the off-year so that we would have data every year, wouldn't have to wait, you know, every other year. And our teacher retention rate would be the second metrics that we would use. And it's currently at 83.9. And we'd be working towards that goal of 86 or above, which would be nice. So, the more detailed strategies and those pieces have already been provided. But this is just summary of our plan as it stands. And are there any questions about where we are?
So, immediately after we vote, this becomes our strategic plan. Am I correct?
That's my understanding. That's my understanding.
Yes, ma'am. It will be changed on the website and we'll be reading different visions out here. Next board meeting. Okay.
Well, just, just to clarify, we would begin July 1st. So, if the board approves all of this tonight, we just need some time to, I don't know what the right word is, make it pretty.
Yeah.
You know, we need to make, you know, put this in booklet form and get it on a website and probably a flip book and all of that. But I'm, but I mean internally, we're gonna start pushing towards these goals immediately, but the kickoff would be July 1st. And we would certainly unveil all the details with this at our convocation, but before that, principals will certainly be involved and be made aware.
Now, to make it pretty on a website, Mr. Iverson can do that, like that, correct?
That's right. And we are, you know, probably going to have a digital format, a flip book, like Dr. Dawson Block said. We also will have offline versions so that we can, you know, meet audiences in different places. So, those are the things that we're working on is the, the pretty stuff at this point.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Does anybody have any questions about the strategic plan? All right, I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Congratulations. We now have a strategic plan.
Thank you.
Long time coming. Okay, next we have our personnel report. Ms. Adams?
Okay. I move that the Lee County Board of Education approve the four-year administrator contract and the one-year and four-year teacher contracts as presented in the closed session. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
I move that the Lee County Board of Education...
I'm sorry, we're missing one, one more.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the HR report as discussed in closed session.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, Pastor, your turn.
All right. I move that the Lee County Board of Education go into closed session under North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A, 1A3A6 to discuss confidential personnel information under North Carolina General Statute 115C-319 and 115C-321 and to consult with the board's attorney and maintain the attorney and client privilege.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We now go to closed session.